Thank you. Alrighty, we'll call our meeting to order for January 11th, 2022. Ask everyone to please stand for our invocation. Ms. Plato is called, and she's sick, so please remember her in prayer.
Oh gracious, and miserable father, it was again that you allowed us to assemble together. Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to get through the holiday season, Lord, and as 2022 approaches and end play, Father, we ask you to continue, Lord, to hold our hand, and we lead this kind of forward. Father God, these are blessed at your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now first, we have approval of agenda items.
I know we accept that agenda items is written.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Shenanigans, thank you. Up next, election of officers. So I think now is the time we're going to election of officers, so like I said, we've I was chairman for two years, and so I thank you for allowing me an opportunity to hold to see this chairman and lead, and hopefully we're to a better place, and look forward to the next chairman continuing to move forward. So at this time, we'll, I guess we'll open the floor.
I nominate Councilman Anthony Woods, chairman.
Second. I nominate Charles Paul Measley.
Second.
We have two. Woods, and we have Charles Paul Measley. Both those have a second, one more. Alright, we have two. First, we'll vote on chairman for Mr. Anthony Woods. All in favor, raise your right hand. Three. Mr. Charles Paul Measley. Four. Four to three. Mr. Charles Paul Measley is the chairman. Up next, we'll have vice chairman.
I nominate Dr. Johnson.
I second.
Alright, I nominate.
I know.
Jason Steen will pass.
I'm ready.
We have Dr. Johnson. Vice chair nomination. Jason Steen, vice chair nomination.
I'm ready, Mr. Johnson. It's very obvious what's happening right now. Before we go out, make a motion that we go into executive session.
I second. For what?
Contractual personnel issues.
I'd ask for the attorney, is there any contractual personnel issues that we are discussing?
I'm not aware of any.
But the councilman has requested to go to executive session for contractual personnel issues.
Can we finish the...
I'm ready with that motion, and I make a motion that we go into executive session that has been properly seconded by councilman.
Alright. For, I mean, for what cause? I mean, you said for personnel issues?
To be discussed in executive session.
Do we move in that?
You're the chairman, you're looking at Mr. Monahan, but you are the chairman. You are. A motion has been made, a second has been carried, carried the motion without looking at Mr. Monahan or Mr. McLeod. You are the chairman for right Mr. McLeod is our attorney. Exactly, but you are running the meeting, he's not, and Mr. Monahan is not, you are. So you deferred to them, and there's a motion that had been properly moved and seconded, carried the motion, councilman.
But we're in the process of election of officers. I mean, there's a time we can go into executive session.
We can go into executive session as move and second, carry the motion, councilman.
Let's, all in favor of going to executive session, raise your right hand. Oppose? So it's now that you're not going to executive session?
We can say we have to say open public.
Okay. Attorney, our legal, is that the correct way to do it?
I don't know, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what the question is right now, Lord.
We voted not to go into executive session.
So that means I can't speak?
Yeah, yes, sir, you can speak.
So I will speak? Unreadiness on the motion.
We, but we were in a motion.
In unreadiness on that motion.
I don't understand what you're asking.
So you don't understand about the rules of order?
Yes, sir, I do. We had a motion and a second, and a motion and a second for chair and vice chair. We were voting on vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And there was unreadiness to move on that motion.
I don't understand what it's on.
So we don't understand about the rules of order.
We have a motion.
My unreadiness is stated because it's obvious what's going on right now. God bless Ms. Plato, I wish her the best, but I honestly hope that there was no intimidation or manipulation to get her not to come to the meeting this evening. Because there's a lot of manipulation and backhandedness, if that's a word, I just made it up, going on. And everybody around this council knows it, exactly.
Mr. Johnson, I think you're making a remark that you have nothing to back it up against a failed council member, me and everybody else sitting here, that includes every one of them. You're making an accusation that you have no proof of anything.
I don't need proof.
You don't need proof?
Not to make this accusation, because it's obvious.
Well, I would assume you need to, you start accusing people of intimidating people.
Councilman Steen has just come off this council as chairman. Why do we put him right back in as vice chair when he just been playing this tag-team version with the past council member? We have other voices. Councilman Woods is a senior council member, been on multiple councils. His expertise at this time would be much more needed, if not in a councilman, a chairman position or a vice chairman position, but you can put the same people right back in place to manipulate the council? It's 2022, a brand new year, and we going to the same year with the same thing that we've been going through, the same loop over and over again. And I know y'all tired of me saying it, because I'm tired of saying it. This is unfair to our county. It's unfair to the people who put us in office to lead, not to just follow, to lead. We are elected officials, we are public servants. We deserve better as a citizen, myself. Strip the councilman title all the way, I'm a citizen of Marlborough County, I'm a taxpaying citizen, and I'm not happy with the direction on my council. And until we begin to change, we're going to continue to go through the same thing that we've been going through for year after year after year after year. A crazy person knows that if you continue to do the same thing, that you're going to get the same results. So this tag-team y'all continue to play, it's unfair. It's unfair to the citizens of Marlborough County who expect us to lead.
Dr. Johnson, I do agree with you 100%. We have been sitting in the shadows for a long period of time, knowing that there's meetings behind meetings, meetings before the meetings. As myself, it really is a slap in my face and other members on this council, or some members of the council, to have a person of my character and my experience to be overlooked. And it's not Mr. Measley's fault, because he only been here two years. But we asking for him to leave the county as, over the county council, with only two years of experience in county government. I have 16 years in. And as I say, I do hope and pray that Ms. Plato is well. But when you always see, we have never been a council of black and white, in my eyes. But tonight is a black and white issue. You know, in this world where we say we don't want to pay the race card, it's all with black and white, but ladies and gentlemen, and people on Facebook, it is black and white. And I have no problem saying that, because in the past, we have done things pretty much above board, and it was something that was questionable, but in anything that we do, some things are questionable. But when you come in tonight, and knowing that it could be a very important election, this is a very important time for Marlborough County, 2022. And if I'm going to a situation, I want to have the best people in position, knowledge-wise and on the same team as possible. And as we, as Chairman Steen put it, when we went through the election, you know, we saw three black hands, three white hands, four white hands. And I think real thing is real thing, you know? It is a democracy, and the vote remains and done. But like I say, with 16 years on this council, I have seen a lot of things done that was not proper, that was intimidated, and I know this for a fact. You know, I'm not saying something without thinking, I'm saying things without note. But what Dr. Johnson is implying is a true, it's true people, it's true identity, I'm telling you, it's 100% true. Don't, everything ain't black and white, it's something, people do things up under the table. I ain't, I'm not going to call no name, but it's not the town or the place. I'm done.
Alright. We still have, we still have to vote on vice chair.
It's still some unreadiness.
Well, we.
This is a unjust process that's going on right now.
Every, every, every one of us has a vote, so we have, we have, we have a motion, we had a second, we had a motion and a second.
And I'm going to finish my unreadiness before we go through with that motion. Because it's time now to have a voice. I didn't get on this council just to sit. I didn't get on this council just to vote. I got on this council to help make some change. And you all are making it obviously clear that you all are happy with the conditions that our county is in. And you're making it perfectly clear that you don't want any other voice, any other direction, any other ideas to help move our county forward. There are eight miles, seven miles around this council. If seven miles can't do it, what makes you think one mile can? We are intelligent people who care about our county. We have a voice in council. We are the authority holders here. That's why we are elected officials who hire and appoints an administrator. But we are, we are elected officials, that's what our job is to help govern, not to defer. I understand we need a leader, but we need a leader that's going to collaborate and engage with council in the manner that we need to move our county forward, not manipulate the process to get it the way he wants it, to continue to run it the way he wants it. That's unfair to the people, especially when we're not getting the results. It's unfair. This contract says that every February, we sit down and engage this contract with council. That has not happened, hadn't happened in 2021. So we're in violation of our own contract. With respect to council, trying to get things back on track. Things are on track, the track that needs to be.
The council, councilman.
No, you're lying.
I'm not asking you, Dr. Johnson.
Who you asking?
We voted and you're, is the chair.
Well, we need to stick with the agenda, and well, that's, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss contractual and personnel issues. You know, it's that.
Is this a...
Move the motion, chairman.
Is this a... Is that possible to do that? Should we go to executive session? Can we do that?
What the, what the issue? I mean, why is that we should go into executive session?
Who you asking? Mr. Monahan is not running the meeting.
I was asking our attorney.
Our chairman is not running the meeting, you said you're the chairman, you assumed that thought he run the meeting.
Dr. Johnson, you were way out of hand.
I'm way out of hand, because this county is out of hand.
Mr. Johnson?
Dr. Johnson?
Dr. Johnson?
Thank you.
I've sit here for a year on this council, have you?
Yes.
I've sit back and I've watched, the five years I've been on here, I've watched decades of councilmen sitting up here, women, men, people from all across this county that served this county, and you sit here, in one of your first meetings, you said for the last 50 years, the councils in Marlborough County have done nothing for the people of this county. But that's just not true, and I think the people of the county over the years, I think they will vouch for that. This county has moved ahead, and it.
No, we haven't, no we haven't.
That's just your opinion.
No, and if you sincerely believe that, if you sincerely believe that, Councilman Olden, shame on you. If you sincerely believe that, shame on anybody up here that can stand here and say that our county is in the best condition it has to be in. Shame on you if you will say that over the last 25 years that I've been, I've minded opening doors. This county hasn't changed not one bit.
Dr. Johnson, that's a whole different meeting, we can.
But the leadership reflects that, and the leadership of the same four leadership that's continuing to happen, and we're going to continue to engage in the same thing, this needs to be said. This is a new year, a brand new year, it needs to be said.
I think we'll adopt Jason Steen as vice chair, raise your right hand. That's one, all in favor of Dr. Johnson, raise your right hand.
Hi, I'm speaking for Ms. Plato.
Jason Steen is it, and we are moving forward.
I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss contractual and personnel issues.
There is a section here, number 11, I hear for executive session.
I'm making a motion.
We go to, we go to, number 11, you know, if it's in the general.
It's in the general.
Moving on to public hearing, ordinance 822, assessing can be postponed this time until eleven a.m. Do the Sam Moses, our attorney. Accommodation.
Mr. Chairman, yes, Sam Moses, our economic development attorney, has advised that they're working with Mohawk to finalize a couple of details, and they've asked, we postpone this to a later date.
Alright, next we're moving to the approval of the minutes for the December 6th, 2021 regular meeting.
Moved and sent, Mr. President.
Alright, there's a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm staying.
That passes, the approval minutes for the December 28th, call council meeting.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the call, meeting minutes from December 28th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll accept the minutes, all in favor.
I'm staying.
You're staying? Alright, moving on to our old business. This does require a vote. The county administrator will give reporting, suggested work session in next two or three weeks for this ordinance. It's an ordinance adopting and redistricting plan for Marlborough County Council, redefining the eight single-member council districts reapportioned as the population in accordance with the 2020 federal decennial census and applicable laws and requirements. This is the second reading.
Mr. Chairman, we sent some stuff out, y'all need to, we request you have a work session so you can direct us and then the state where to change things. From the last time you had a work session, you know, it was pretty close population-wise, but not demographic-wise, so you've got to get it to a point where you have it balanced population, then have the analysis done. There was one section in there of Richardson Park that had a census block in it that others were like an island in, and that created an over number there. There were some, I sent some other ways that if you move one thing, you got to move another, but I think the easiest thing to do is to have y'all have a work session, let you look at the maps, let you figure out what you want to do, and then we can have the state run the numbers, both the population split and the demographics, so that you can consider alternatives and have community meetings. But that really needs to happen, you know, as soon as y'all can make time for it, the week of the 25th, either the 25th, 26th, or 27th are open for us, but we'll make anything work that y'all come up with. If you can let us know afterwards, or sometime in the next couple of days, we'll try to arrange that, so you can get that done.
Is there a motion to approve, number 825? This is just to keep it moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, the third reading obviously is what's important, you know, you've definitely got to get it done by March, because it's, you'll hold things up if you don't. So, yeah, we would ask that you consider that if you will.
Any other questions? Move on, it's 825. Is there a second read? Alright, all in favor, approval ordinance 825?
I'm staying.
You're staying? Alright, ordinance 826. It's the solar project, we want to near the Delta Mill. Ordinance 826, an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Marlborough County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Roads, as sponsor and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentive and certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county. The enlargement of the boundaries of the multi-county industrial and business park previously created by the Marlborough County and Darnington County to include certain property located in the Marlborough County, South Carolina, now to be hereafter owned and to be operated by Project Roads or one or more companies related thereto, and other related matters. This is the second reading.
Mr. Chairman, we presented last time, this is a solar project at the corner of Hicks and Hicks Road and Brickyard Road, so if you turn off of number nine at number one, and you go down there, it's on the corner. So right now, you know, we're making sure that our codes, people, and the planning commission that this, this project abides by the rules y'all passed within the last year, you know, making rules and protecting residences and that sort of thing. It does appear that it does, it has the buffers around it, and will be capital investment in the county, pay some tax dollars. This is second reading.
Okay. It does require a vote. Are there any questions?
Jim, can you read that again?
The ordinance.
Yes, please.
An ordinance authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, an execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Marlborough County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Roads, as sponsor and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentives, incentive, and certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county. Second, the enlargement of the boundaries of the multi-county industrial or business park previously created by the county, Marlborough County and Darnington County, to include certain property located in Marlborough County, South Carolina, now or to be hereafter owned and/or operated by Project Roads or one or more companies related thereto. And three, other related matters.
So that means we get a fee instead of taxing this particular company?
Yep, Mr. Dr. Johnson, with the economic develops, this development things, fee in lieu is a negotiated tax rate for projects that are over $2.5 million. And the way, the way that's structured in South Carolina is to provide taxes that are more competitive with other states. The trouble is, even with the incentives in South Carolina, you're often higher than North Carolina with their regular taxes. So this is a typical agreement, and the county's done, you know, probably 30 to 40 of them over the years to provide those incentives to have people come here, to encourage investment.
Any other questions? Or do you need to vote on this? Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve ordinance 826.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of ordinance 826?
I'm staying.
And this is the second reading. Any oppose? Alright, I approve ordinance 826 for the second reading. Moving along to new business, this is Resolution 1-22-01. This is a resolution outlining the criteria to be used on Marlborough County Council for the adoption of a redistricting plan for Marlborough County, South Carolina. As a question of resolution stating that council will, whenever possible, follow the same guidelines regarding demographics as the last redraw in 2010. Mr. Monahan?
This is, Mr. Strowman and Dr. Johnson, this was all discussed in the last meeting. This is basically a resolution pledging that council will follow the same sort of guidelines used the last time, even though the Department of Justice and other agencies don't review it anymore. So it's a, it's a pledge of council to follow the same rules and to be fair and make sure that they're not discriminating against any demographic or any area or anything like that.
Mr. Monahan, did you find out whether or not, question was asked last time, could we send it into the Department of Justice, and would they accept it if we sent it?
Yeah, they're not doing that anymore. I mean, you could, the answer that, you know, I got from conversations, maybe you could find somebody you could pay that knew how to look at it like that, but the Department of Justice and all, they're not doing that for this area anymore.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any oppose? Alright, moving on to new business, a request for consideration for storing salary adjustments for sheriff's office. Mr. Monahan?
You know, Chair McNeil, I want to call him chief, but he's going to present.
Good evening, Chair, council members, and everyone in the building. Thank you for this opportunity to be giving us an opportunity to speak with you this evening concerning the request that we made, and I'd like to do an overview of the sheriff's department, of the status of the sheriff's department, that way you get a better understanding of the justification that we're trying to make for this request. And I'd like to begin by saying that right now, we're budgeted, the sheriff's department is budgeted for 31 sworn officers and three civilians. Presently, we have 24 sworn officers and three civilians. Of those 24 officers, eight of those officers aren't certified. So we're talking about 16 officers that are certified. Out of those 16 officers that are certified, only three of them are road deputies. So we have eight deputies that are working right now that aren't certified, and three that are, four supervisors, they're being run by four supervisors. Out of the eight that are not certified, five of those officers, officers starting on the 21st of November, will be going to school. Should have been in school a long time ago, but they are going, starting on the 24th of this month. Three will be going to the academy, three will be in their four-week training course. And because we're short-start staff, we're using, after the first two finish their four weeks, then we'll start the next two, and that will give all eight of the officers that we have that will be prepared to go onto the academy. What that causes is a very shortage, and what that shortage comes to overtime, and that's one of the reasons that I'm asking for this salary increase, hopefully that we can encourage other people to want to come to, to the sheriff's department. I do appreciate all efforts and everything that was done before I came in February, I know there was a raise in February to the department, and I know it raised those salaries and it made a lot of good, a lot of people feel good about it, but we need to raise it just a little bit more. I'm not trying to exceed any other department, but I am trying to make it as equal as a fair playing ground for everybody, so we can get some of the better people. We have good people, but we need better, we need more people. We have good people, but we need better, we need more people. We're running two shifts, one day shift and one night shift, with two shifts during the day, two at night. In the past, this county has worked with one or two deputies working at night, and that's it. One or two deputies working at night. That's not safe, it's not good for the public, it's not good for the people that my, these officers swore that they would take care of. You can't take care of everybody if there's only one or two people working. What you've done is put everybody at risk that's working, and that causes them to work in an unsafe environment. As of the, I want to say the nineteenth of December, that Friday after we started, we now have three to four people working every night. We've taken first shift and we put them on third shift because that's where they need to be at. As a result of that, we've been able to stop two or three break-ins that happened. We've actually caught people, burglars, breaking in businesses as a result of that. We noticed because of that. Because what happens is we put everybody in a district, and so there's somebody working property in every area now Marlborough County at night. That wasn't happening in the past when we were having a lot of break-ins at night. That's going to help with that. So, doesn't work, yes, that worked. And now what it puts us is that we're short during the day, and we're covering during the day, we're covering because we can work during the day. But that's not what you hired all of us for. And we can't get what we need done if we're out working. So, that's another reason that we're asking for this salary increase. When it comes to technology, we're in a bad, we're in a pickle. We have eighteen desktops, ten laptops, and they're all not, I'll say they'll be outdated real soon. They'll be obsolete because of Windows ten. Everything that we have will be obsolete very soon because of changes to Windows ten. And I say this because we just put, and I appreciate this, we just put cameras in last week. We put new cameras in last week, and we appreciate that. The problem is, some of our desktops can't handle the cameras because the software is different. So, we do need new laptops and new desktops. And we're not asking for desktops anymore, we're asking strictly for laptops. And the reason is, our officers have to have training, online training, and they're having to do it illegally, as far as I'm concerned, by using their own cell phone. They go home in the evening time and they use their cell phones to get caught up with their case, and that's something that they have to have, they have to have forty hours every three years. And because there's nothing at the office that they can work with, they're having to use their own phones, and that's not good. That's wrong. But I appreciate the efforts they're doing to make sure that they get the work that they need done. And I appreciate, I can say that, if I'm not mistaken, that Mr. Caribou came by last week and looked around. I don't know what his capacity is, but he was there helping out last week, looking and seeing the same thing that we're seeing. And we've been told that hopefully once the IT person is in, that we would be priority, and I appreciate that very much. We need that now because we have a problem with overtime. When you've got one desktop and you've got three officers who come in and do their work at the end of a night, and you've got only one desktop and everybody's got to input their stuff, you got off at six, it might be seven-thirty, eight o'clock before you got a chance to put your stuff in. That's overtime. That overtime could have been resolved just by having enough equipment there properly to do what needed to be done. And I can honestly say, we've been in conversation, and that seems to be something that we'll be able to take care of, that that is an issue. Body cameras. We have a body camera system in place now that is dysfunctional. It does not work. We have twelve, was it twelve body cams? Ten. We have ten, none of them work. That's not good.
You've got ten?
We have ten.
Body cameras?
Body cameras.
And they're not working?
Let me get the right word, I'm looking for it, the docking station does not work. But we checked with highway safety. I made a phone call to highway safety to see what we can do about getting some as soon as possible, and they assured me, and they actually bought some yesterday. But in the process of that, we got a phone call from highway safety saying that you got two grants, one in twenty sixteen and one in twenty eighteen, four body cams. The captain checked and said that we found out that the body cams were in the, out in storage building outside. No, I'll get to that. We go outside, he checks the body cams, and it appears that the docking station, the hard drive for the docking station was not working properly, and they removed it. But that would, to me, would have been a simple, let me take that back, I'm not a techie person. According to the captain, that should have been an easy fix, all you had to do to replace the hard drive. As opposed to that, those cameras were placed in the storage building. It was thirty of them? It's thirty of them. They're still in the box. And we had already started the process of looking for new body cams, and we go to Axion, which is top of the, I won't say top of the line, but they're top in their business. And to replace the ones that we thought we did have was, I think the initial cost was forty thousand, eighteen thousand for the next four years to pay for them. Because what we need to do, when it comes to body cams, most of what we're doing is we're storing data, which could be evidence. And what we need to do with that evidence is to make sure that it's placed in a safe place. And to us, we don't feel like, at least I don't feel like, storing it in a server somewhere is not safe. I think it needs to be in a cloud. To put it in that cloud, that's where the eighteen thousand dollars come from, but it keeps it safe. We have to look at what we need to do when it comes to the solicitors office, as far as getting roof files out, different things that we need, that has to be stored for many years, and the cloud to me is the best and the most safest way, is that we don't have to worry about ransom and different things that may be going on when it comes to stealing stuff and we have to pay to get it back. To us, I think that's the best thing to do. But because we found those thirty that we found, and we feel like we can fix the docking station, that's a cost we hope we don't have to incur right now. I'm hoping we don't have to do that for years to come if we can get it fixed. And one of the guys came from, came down yesterday and said it probably, he said seventy dollars to replace the hard drive. So, that's seventy dollars that's been placed on the side for the past six years that we could have been using. Uniforms, and that's not really an issue, we have the money for uniforms, but I'll tell you, no, we will be changing uniforms. I like uniformity, I like looking professional, that's me personally. But I think that there's a certain art about us, that we're considered professionals. People expect us to look a certain way, they expect us to act a certain way, and I think you can't look that way if you don't, you can't work that way if you don't look that way. So, I believe in clean-shaven faces. I won't say they're going to be wearing class A uniforms, but they will be wearing a different color pant because black pants and black shirts will change, one becomes gray, while the other one stays black. So, if we can get away and go to a multicolor, I think it'd be helpful. But we do have that money now that we can get our hands on, so that's going to be fine.
Sheriff McNeil?
Yes, sir.
And this is a request for the salary?
Yes, yeah, but everything I'm telling you on has to do with salary.
Okay.
It really does. And the reason I say it has to do with salary, because all about how we can get people to come here and work. If we don't have the equipment and things that we need to work, we can't get people here. We can't keep them here if they're not able to do the job that they need to do. So, yes, sir, you're right, there is a part of salary.
And that is within these figures that you?
That is in those figures that you're looking at right now, if you have what I have in front of you. What we've done to try to make that easier for you to make that decision is, we have taken a position away, which we have been, which is the civil service person, because there's thirty police officers, everyone on police officer can serve a paper. So, as opposed to having one, we now got everybody serving papers. And I think they're going to serve them, they don't mind. And so, that's one. The other thing is, we have a victim's advocate who could be paid from state victim services, and we've agreed to make sure that we take some of her salary and pay it through by the state, which gives us even a little bit more extra money to do what we're asking to be done. And there's a possibility that there's some other funds that we could try to find if we could get her to do something else. But that's where we are with the salary increase. I would be doing a justice, I did not mention the detention center because I am responsible for the detention center. Right now, we are budgeted for twenty-two people at the detention center, and we have ten. So, we're not any better at detention center than we are with the sheriff's department. And that has a lot to do with salaries as well. I do believe we're, I know myself and the chief deputy have been in conversation with the marshal's office on three different occasions, if not four, about four times, we talked with some of the marshal's office, and we may be able to come up with some type of contractual agreement that would be real helpful for this county. Only thing we have to do in between the captain and the chief and myself and Mr. Mummel, I think we're going to look at getting an agreement with the marshal's office that could be helpful, very helpful, more helpful than you'll ever know.
We certainly appreciate your hard work and we want to make sure that you will equip and you can pay the salaries that you need to, to attract the deputies.
Yes, sir, and I think we can. We just want to be, I want to be competitive. I want everybody working for Marlborough County just as competitive as anybody else.
And let me ask you, Mr. Mummel, I know we've got a set budget.
Can you elaborate?
Yes, sir, and we've met multiple times with Sheriff and his crew, and what he's asking for, I think I sent you all an email, would be about a twenty-eight thousand dollar impact, and we can, we probably would be better for you just to vote to make that amendment, but it's not going to break the bank, and it is, as Sheriff said, very much in line with what you did last year. You know, last year, you did something. So, it's this, it's next year, and what he's asking is, makes good sense. One other element that came out of conversations that, I keep, I won't call you chief, had was, was to have some sort of hiring bonus, and, you know, this is a good idea and something that we'd like to see applied across the board to all county positions, and it particularly impacts his stuff and EMS and any job that we're having, more and more trouble hiring people. So, the proposal there is, and tell me if I got it wrong, Calvin too, is to have a two thousand dollar signing bonus if we, well, if we have a county position that we've tried to hire for at least ninety days and we're having no success, then the hiring bonus would kick in, and it would be two thousand dollars to come to work. A thousand when you first start, a thousand at six months.
A thousand at a year.
Thousand at a year, and a thousand to start, a thousand at a year, and then if you don't stay two years, a prorated payback.
Yes, exactly.
Of what's left there. That doesn't necessarily require a budget amendment because if a position is open for that long, you're saving that money. So, to answer your question is, I think it'd be appropriate for council, if they approved to approve a twenty-eight thousand dollar budget amendment for this purpose, and we can handle it with the revenue we have now in the budget.
So, we would need a motion for a twenty-eight thousand amendment to the budget?
We've always gone into executive session and discussed all salary matters to the sheriff's department and the detention center. Because I would like to hear more from the sheriff as to, you know, what he's doing in the house, I'd like to ask some questions. But I'm very uncomfortable going in an open session.
I mean, that's not my call, so.
So, you know, to have a motion on that type of increase without having a full council discussion would be, you know, we'd appreciate it if we could discuss it more with the sheriff.
In executive session? Okay. In a separate meeting?
Well, all contractual matters, stuff, right, and salary matters when it comes to employees should be discussed in executive session. We're discussing this in open session.
I make a motion that we move to executive session?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that do that. Now, unless, unless.
I'll, wherever we need to go, I'm ready.
Right. Unless we need to move on this now, we can move to executive session and discuss it.
Well, agenda item number eleven is for executive session.
Right. So, whenever you want to do that.
I would be, I mean, I think, well, maybe go, at that time, do we have a consensus on that? So, if we could, we'll continue in executive session when we get to item, agenda number eleven.
All right, thank you very much for your time, and I hope I've been helpful and at least letting you know what the status of the sheriff's department is with the detention center.
Okay. And then when we come out, we'll vote whether to go with.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, the assignment is spare Marlborough County EMS ambulances to Wallace Rescue.
Evening, Chairman, Counselor. So, basically, what brings me to you tonight is, so Wallace Fire Rescue is our primary backup agency when all of our Marlborough County EMS ambulances are tied up in their nine-one calls. Being a volunteer agency, they have limited revenue sources. They're in need of an ambulance, and we have a new ambulance that will be completed in the next roughly sixty days. It is a replacement. So, what we like to do is reassignment of our spare ambulances, basically strip the decals and remove our decaf license or from them, but maintain possession of it and continue to maintain it for them, allow them to strike the decal and meet state licensure with it and operate it as their piece of equipment. It would help them tremendously in having another piece of equipment available, and we could support that without putting any kind of strain on us or parts of it. And that's pretty much simply it, unless you have any questions.
How many people are you short?
How many people are we short?
Yeah.
So, we are currently nine people short.
Nine people short? Are you advertising it also?
We have, yes, sir.
You got to do the county website, or you do LinkedIn, or?
So, we have, we have posted on the county website, we have posting on N D. We also have an additional posting on a targeted website, a targeted recruiting website through South Carolina EMS Association. We'll be renewing it. It's been out for almost thirty days, it'll be expiring in a couple of days. We'll be renewing it here in the next few days.
Calvin, thank you for your report. Mr. Mummel, is there anything else to?
No, we retain ownership of the ambulance, and, you know, a lot of this equipment was paid for by the charities trust, and so we did check with them, and they were very supportive of doing this. The, oh, gosh, what do you call it, the cardiac box, the ER in a box, the equipment in these ambulances at Wallace are owned by Marlborough County to make sure they all have the same thing, everybody's working on the same thing. So, it's an extension of that.
Okay, that does not require a vote, that's just a, some information.
We're not giving anybody anything or.
Okay. All right, we'll move on down to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any? Are there any that are vacant or?
There always are, we can get you a fresh copy and let you take a look.
All the council members, at least check their appointments and make sure they're all filled. We'll move to reports. Mr. Westpark for the finance report.
Mr. Chairman, council members, you have the report for December in front of you. General fund revenues for the six months ended December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, total three million, six hundred, three thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars. In comparison with the six-month period ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, that amount was three million, one eighty-four, seven thirty-three. General fund expenditures through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, total five million, seven sixty-three, and nine dollars of a twelve million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollar budget, or forty-four point nine eight percent of budget year-to-date expenditures for the six months ended December thirty-one, two thousand twenty, totaled five... 31, 2020, totaled $5,841,607. In summary, income is higher and expenditures are lower year-to-date, so that concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, is there any way that we possibly we can start getting the financial report in our package instead of getting here at the meeting? Because I just don't have, I can't go through line by line and do it.
Well, can we get staff to get that in the package?
No, that's no problem if the council passes that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, this, every month we recognize folks with more than five years of service, and we don't have any anniversaries during December, so we don't have anybody to call out. We do have some, a couple of upcoming events. One is a, a couple, or three of them are vaccination clinics, and you can see them on there, there's one on January 12th at McDonald's, January 20th at the community center, and January 21st at the Husberry Church. I'm sure Ms. Lawson's here, so she may be going to speak on those as well. The Martin Luther King Day Parade is January 15th Saturday, this Saturday, with a lineup beginning on John Quay Road at 10:00 a.m. As far as administrator's report, the recreation study, there are a total of seven focus groups planned for next week, it's conducted by the consultant selected to conduct the assessment of the recreation facilities and programs. These focus groups will include members of county councils, city councils of Bennettsville, the school board, the appointed members of the recreation advisory committee, the mayors of the towns, as well as citizens. The groups are organized so that the members of various organizations aren't all on one group, so all the county councils are not on one, all the school boards are not on one. That way to make sure everybody has a chance to discuss their ideas. There's also a couple of groups for middle and high school students, so that they feel comfortable in talking in that group. As part of the meeting next week, there'll be at least two site visits, one at the Eastside School, where folks are interested in that, and a consultant to go and look at that, and Lake Wallace, which is adjacent, and one at Lindsey Park, there's also one at List, the library area. So those consultants will take a look at that, look at some of the ideas that are out there, and take more information from the folks that are there. On Wednesday, the 19th at 5:00, there'll be a group open to the community. This will be at the Sky on East Main Street, that's as close as we could get to the library where the other ones are occurring, and we'll put that out on the county Facebook and in the newspaper and on the county website, and we'll also get flyers, so you all as council members encourage folks to come out and share their ideas on that. Once everything's compiled, the consultant will, consultants will come back with a report of what they heard, and that'll be provided to you all, and then work towards, you know, next steps of plans or actual action items by the March time we've talked about in the past. A quick note on opioid litigation, you know, we had a call meeting, or y'all had a call meeting about that not too long ago. There may be a need for another call meeting, because they're very close to having an actual settlement. The dollar figures are still not really tied down. The other issue is whether it would go through the state or come straight to the county. It'd be in our best interest for it to come straight to the county. It does still indicate that the money would be used for ongoing future activities to mitigate opioid-related costs and not backwards reimbursement. One thing, this, this next item on my update is storm tractor training, you know, with the bad tornadoes they had out in Kentucky. Steve Akers with 911 is putting together a storm tractor training program for county staff, and this is so that folks understand what they're looking at, if they're out and about, you know, whether it's a tornado or just a storm, that kind of information can be helpful to 911 and emergency preparedness in making sure, you know, we're there to be prepared to take care of our citizens. The next item is a request for interested vendors. You know, the county always has projects going on and repairs, you know, repairs to our buildings, economic development projects and things like that, and, you know, I know that council in the past has supported anything to help local businesses and to try to get folks, to help them make money for their businesses. So in that interest, we prepared an advertisement over in the newspaper, and it basically is saying, you know, hey, we have these things that are coming up, or always have things, and if you're interested in being called for a bid or a quote, then please send us your information. Now, one thing in the procurement policy that council passed several years ago is what's called a local preference. So if you have one contractor that's from Marlboro County and one that's from Flots County, the local contractor gets a 10% advantage, so if, if the local person's 10% too high, then that would equalize it. And that's, you see that in a lot of jurisdictions, I know the school board had that, and it helps local folks, you know, have more business or have a chance to compete with larger regional folks. So this is just something that we do occasionally, and we need to do it now to try to get names on the list. The digital sign is still scheduled to arrive next month. I sent you all a note that the preferred location is not available. I went and tried again, I haven't gotten an answer again. I talked to Councilman Strowman, this has, you know, been his baby, and, you know, the desire is to have one out there near Walmart, to have one out there near Foodline or somewhere, but also the concern is that, you know, you don't want it wedged between two other signs where you can't see it. So I'd ask if y'all are out and about to think that way and look and see what you see, and then staff can chase it down. You did approve enough for two signs, so one alternative is to go ahead and do one somewhere. I mentioned Broad Street, it's not necessarily ideal, but we do own not only the property where the farmer's market is, but the property across the street in that big open area that is not wedged in between places. So if you all will take a look, we have a few weeks. The installation is not that complicated, it's basically a concrete foundation footing and electrical service to it, but we want to get that up as quick as possible, as we're still, you know, seeing a lot of jobs available and want to communicate that to the public. Economic development, you know, we talked about having a work session for redistricting, and I would hope that y'all would consider having an executive session at that time to discuss in detail a large economic development project we have that's going to require an incentive package to compete with North Carolina, and it needs to be discussed at length with everyone there, so that y'all can, can indicate what you want to do or how you want to handle it, and we'll take it from there once we have that. So if you're okay with that, when we do get together, is have that as well at the same time within the next couple, few weeks.
All right, thank you, Ron. Are there any questions?
I have one. Mr. Mullen, the image committee, where they at and who is on that committee, and have you had any kind of report from them yet?
Yeah, the report I gave you tonight is basically a report.
From the image committee?
Yeah, and all they're doing is just coordinating things, like trying to spread the rest out and make sure you don't have everybody on the same thing. The image committee is a set committee of the economic development partnership the council approved, and it consists, and I may miss somebody, the mayors of the towns, the head of the lake authority, the chamber commerce person, historic preservation person, mayor, chairman of council, and folks like that. So it is representative of every organization, and it is part of that economic development board that y'all approve. But this report is basically that, it's, they're just a vessel to put it together, and then the information will come back so you can make decisions.
Am I understanding right that we still are on track for the March deadline?
That's, that's what they said, and we're, and Ms. Bundy has worked very hard to try to get all these groups together so we can stay on that plan.
One other question, as far as the vendors concerned, you know, we do a lot of business in Marlboro County with a lot of companies, and we don't have any say so who they hire or not, but I think it would be prudent of us to make sure, to try to make sure that African-Americans are included in getting some of these contracts, and at least the companies that we hire, make sure that they include African-Americans in their company as well.
I think that's a good direction to go, and quite frankly, the trouble we're having now is having anybody African-American or any, anything, so it's, it's a challenge, but.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the recognition of citizens. I'll ask Pearly Lawson, Ms. Pearly Lawson to come forward, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I want to say good evening to everyone.
Thank you for this opportunity.
I'm here representing myself, but also as president of Marlboro County Branch NACP, and this request is for Marlboro County Council to provide more specific guidelines of the redistricting activities to ensure that all Marlboro County citizens can meaningfully participate in the public redistricting process of 2022. This request has also been made to Mr. Frank Rainwater, the person that you had here a few weeks ago to talk from the revenue of fiscal affairs. An email was sent to him and to the, to the county, to the South Carolina Council Counties, and I don't know whether you received this yet, Mr. Mullen, but I would like to make sure that you give every council member one, and make sure that you have one for yourself. That process has to be done, and it has to be done fairly. The request was sent on January 6th, and in that letter, I'm a part of the South Carolina Counts Committee, and in that committee it definitely says that redistricting process must be done fairly, and it must be done with public input. The process takes place every 10 years, as you gave an elaborate speech on that, and I thank God for that, but the thing I have a problem with, that in the past, the community was given the opportunity to see large maps. Look at this. The communities are mapped like this, and these maps were displayed in a building that was appropriate, safe. This building was fine, but this building was too small to have a community meeting. When I attended this meeting in October, I presented to the council the fact that I wanted to be a part of the map drawing, I want the community to be a part of the map drawing. 10 years ago, when the process was done, when Mr. Rainwater presented it, each of you, some of you said of those maps, that you have no idea how those maps were drawn. Some of you admitted that those maps were wrong. One thing that was evident that 10 years ago, that the process was not made public. I attended the meeting in November and December, and there has not been any mentioning of any public meetings that has been going to be where the public will have input. I noticed that tonight you're making a final draft, a second reading on the draft, which means that if a first reading, then you have a second reading, and then a third reading meaning it is approved with no public input. They are requesting that letter saying to you that schedule hearings before and after the maps are being released to the public. It tells you also provide remote participation for all public hearing for those who are unable to attend the person. It tells you to widely advertise the meeting in advance, prioritize safety. We know that this pandemic is still here, no, I do not want to speak on the pandemic tonight, my goal is for redistricting, and I appreciate that, but redistricting is my main goal. With the virus soaring in this county, this meeting room is too small for any of that. You are to hold hearings that are convenient, and not only in just Marlboro and Bennettsville, but there are other, other towns. There's McCall, there's Blenheim, there's Tatum, excuse me, there's Wallace and Blenheim. Those citizens need to see those maps. Also, some of the main questions I have for this council is, when will the public hearing begin? How many do you plan to have? And for the townships of Bennettsville having four districts, I assume that at least three meetings need to be held in Bennettsville, and what are the times and the location? As a citizen, a voter, and president of Marlboro County Branch NACP, I want to ensure that the lines and the maps presented are racially equal and fair, and that racial germinating, packing, cracking does not exist. So I'm going to encourage all citizens, tonight on this telecancy in here tonight, I want to ask that you please participate in this process immediately, attend the meetings, and be prepared, council members, all of you, please be prepared to do the right thing. What I heard tonight was something I will say again, do not play the race card by packing black voters all in the same black districts. Not sharing the information is going to be devastating to us in this county. So I expect and I hope that this council plan to take 2022 as a change year to do the right thing. I do appreciate what you have given me this time to speak, and like any other citizen in this community, I respect what you're doing, I respect anything that you're doing, but I respect the fact that Marlboro County citizens need to be more involved. Thank you for this opportunity, and again, thank you, and I hope to be back bringing another some other valuable information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Thank you for your good work, too.
Ms. Lynn Fleming?
Good afternoon, council, happy new year to all of you. I don't want to appear redundant, because I'm going to report the same thing that Ms. Lawson said. Now, Mr. Mullen, if I, I was listening to you, have, have you got maps? Have you had public meetings? Because fair elections begins, does not happen at the polls on election day. Fair election begins with this process of redistricting, and I went to a couple of state redistricting that they had statewide, because I'm interested in what happens, and I've had friends contact me all across, I've got friends in other places, high and low places, if you get where I'm coming from, that voting is the top issue, and we need to get it right, and we need to do public meetings so the public has input and can look at that map. And I'm hoping that that will happen, because if it doesn't, somebody's going to talk transparency, council. Transparency in Marlboro County is real important, and if we don't do this right, I was in a 1968 lawsuit against the city of Bennettsville for senior member districts, and they slaughtered Bennettsville, they slaughtered South Carolina. I don't know what they call me, I'm just a citizen that wants it done right. I know you can, and I hope you will, and I don't want to appear redundant, but this must be done, we must have input. These, I need to know who's in my district, so if something is wrong, I can go to my neighbor and say, listen, we need to go to council. I don't want to tell me, I want my councilperson, I want a coalition of neighbors that's in that same district. I know this can be done, it's done all over the country, it shouldn't be that hard. It shouldn't be that hard, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. I think now would be a good time to maybe go on to the executive session for the purpose of discussing the salary increase for the sheriff, and Andrew, is it possible to do two? And y'all had another, you wanted to do contractual. Can you do, have two reasons to go in the executive session?
That's my understanding, I'm mistaken what you're going to talk about in the executive session. Speaking of that, when you're in there, is my understanding of what.
Okay, that, those are the two reasons we'd be going to executive session. Do we have a motion to that effect? Is there a second? Okay, we will, all in favor? All right, so we'll move to the back room for executive session, and we will come right back in and we'll vote for the salary increase, and then we'll also have the recognition of council members. And then we'll also have the recognition of council members.
There was a motion in the second to come out of executive session. This statement, Anthony.
Mr. Strum made the motion on second.
We discussed the sound and grace for the sheriff's office. And we need to make a motion that we need a motion as to what we're in love with. I'd like a question to approve. I'm here to do both for the sheriff's office. My motion is second, all in favor? And such topics we've discussed were contradictory and there was no caution, no theory, and any comment. All right, and right now, we're going to recognize the council. Let's talk with Councilor Woods.
The big thing I have to steal his own, my mind along with other people, is that all the stuff we're going through, the district and the redraw of the lines, that should be our top priority. The recreation director, if I'm not mistaken, the change of command is council, then administrator. And for us to even advertise a project manager and don't even take an opportunity to advertise a recreation director, there is no department head in this county that can run for over six months plus and don't have the department head in place. HR can't do it, finance can't do it, public works can't do it. But our children, you know, if we hire someone else as a department head or assistant to a department head and they work three to five days a week, you know, actually work, but a recreation director, talking from experience, it is a full task job. And we cheating our community and we don't even advertise. Mr. Mullins said earlier that the project manager, it hard for them to get a job, have somebody to apply. So if it hard for them to get somebody to apply for a project manager, it might take three to six months to even hire a director, a recreation director. But at least you can put it out there and who knows, we might get lucky. And if a new director come in after we do the study, he got no input. He got to take what already been established and make it do what he do. But we have somebody in place, they can put some input. Because if he is a recreation director as high, he got experience. You know, he got experience. And if that person is in place, the idea that he may bring or she may bring to the table could be an eye opener. But to wait till after the recreation position or recreation plan get in place and then we say, okay, now we can bring barbecue in. Now barbecue got what we already decided. It could be a totally different thing. You know, I think, and this is my whole heart belief, is that we as a council should instruct the administrator to advertise a head or the recreation department head. If we are over the whole county and we do not instruct or put this out in the open, because we've been talking about this for four or five months. You know, and yeah, we thought that the idea for the recreation and the image committee would go a lot faster, but it has not. It's still a creepy crawl, kick, 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 the can down the road. You know, we got a meeting on the 18th. And after that meeting, who knows what's gonna happen after that? Kick, 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 the can down the road. And we have another sport come in, another sport come out. Basketball haven't started yet. Sign up real slow. You know, Mr. Doug did all he can do, but he got four hats he gotta wear. You know, it's a hat for one man or one woman, and that hat need to be put on, somebody here. And then that way, we got somebody to blame, we boom. Barbecue, you ain't doing your job. Why you ain't doing your job? That's all you gotta do is recreation. You ain't worry about trash, you ain't worry about public works, you ain't worry about who did come and work today. It is the regulation director job to make sure that Ms. Rhonda and Mr. Levana do their job efficiently. You know, we can evaluate them, you know, that Mr. Mullins job to evaluate, but first they gonna say, I'm sure handed. I can't, I doing all I can. Eight hours in a day. But recreation is more than eight hours. You know, you call kids to school for the first six AM hour, they in school. Recreation can't get started till they get out of school. So, you know, the eight hour, they ready to go home at six o'clock. And kids just, hey, I'm ready to play now, I'm just getting started. You know, that's, and I said, the vote went, where it went, and we talked about it. Things are satisfied, but it is what it is, that we will move forward. Mr. Strum, I'm done.
Mr. Strum.
First of all, this is, I don't know how to say. This is not the norm, you got to know this is not how we really. We're only very confident in doing it in that opening session. And I think we can do better towards our track. That's concerning, try to stay in order. We got some issues, we got some concerns that I think we need to discuss. The money itself, we can work out and remain cohesive about it. Second of all, Chairman Hill, thank you for being willing to step up to the plate and assume responsibilities. Here to the master, thinking that you're not going to. Thank you for being willing to do that, hopefully you can work with me and help together. And please don't let the board know of anything that you, in your fair terms, immediately give them a call, get the board together and we'll work it out. Let us know if you're good. And make sure, make sure we keep doing what we need to do. The redistricting lines, we have not come to an agreement on the line of making us a be true of a potential line for my district or every individual district. And soon we're gonna get together and do that same process. And once that will be the map we present to the public, this, after we do this, is that one?
I think that's kind of what y'all wanted to do, that's my understanding anyway.
Yeah, that would be one. Because the public really, they really are concerned about this one this time. Ten years ago, the dynamics were different. Now, they really have that argument, and we would have to be sure. There are terms out there that people are putting in their minds and in their head that wasn't after ten years ago. Nobody knew what stacking was, nobody knew what cracking was. But the citizens now know, and they're very attentive. And we got to make sure, just for the record, the pattern is, for instance, my district was a 63% African American district. If I move voters into it, there's a risk that I make parent my district to an 83, 84, 85% African American district. That will be considered. But in my district, African Americans, we need to make sure that, yeah, African Americans will live in that district, but most likely we can crack another district, weaken another district. So African Americans may not live in that district. And we have to be careful, and we have to be sure that we're going to feel it in the group. That's it. Mr. Shumala has the experience, I've got to work about six hours.
Okay, Mark.
Thank you, Chairman Steen, for your service. Thank you, for being here, for thanking the service that you do.
So, Chairman, I think you're a sheriff manure. Just want to say, we got a task at hand, all of our agencies stay at hand, that's a huge task at hand. Want to share with us some lessons. Mountains, so a big mountain to climb. I think you're a great man, I've been knowing you a long time, but still climbing that mountain. So I think council always does support of the sheriff, so we're here to support you. I'm sure the board will see what you have, and the fundamentals. Best things you bring to the table and the wheel and the, I guess, the vibe of just what you can bring to the table. That's all we're thankful for.
I want anybody to be feel rate, pay Sheriff Manille for his call of duty and everything he has. I'm giving us all the sheriff's authority, we realize that we want you to be quick with the opportunity for you and your staff to do it down to town. And so, I'm glad we're able to assist in there, this evening, in large to the redistricting process. I think it's also a plea for public leave. I think it's very important for us to have several, public, we understand that we are at the top front. But we can't public service, that's not paying with public service. It is that, I think we need to be ready to leave it. But again, together we serve, we need to have a leadership council, to look at how we're letting them run there and effectively across this county. I honestly, this is the most disappointing days for myself in this county. And I spent a year of public and private set of leadership, this is in the force display of leadership and manipulation that I've been able to see up close and personal. And until we get truthful about what's going on in our county, until we are able to face people eye to eye and thus as a council, then we say our active force and then to lead our county in collaboration with our county administrator instead of from a dictatorship perspective, we can continue to be in the same position. We have to move, economically we have to move. You look at the last paper, we still right up there at month on it. Every year, we in the same continuum. And nobody seem to be alone. We sit up there as council members and we make decisions that we don't even actively know what's really going on and to help lead the direction of our county. There's no transparency, there's no accountability, and that needs to stop. Because one man can't run this county, if eight people with sound minds can't help him do it. How we expect one person to do it? And if I have my opinion, it's not going to affect the job added. And that's whoever is in that position. Because if I'm looking at what I'm dealing with, I can care who's in the position, I care about the results, and we're not getting any results. And if we're not getting results, we as a council really need to look at the leadership. And while we're not getting results, and be able to adjust so we can begin to get some results and move our county forward. It's unfair. It's really unfair. And we come here month after month, and we're not actively engaged in what's going on within our county. We know little to nothing about what goes on day to day in our county. No, we can't do the day to day job of the county, but we need to be abreast of what's going on so we can be active in helping to change the downward trajectory of our county that's continually going down. We in year three of a pending county, we have not once met with our elected delegation. We have not once met and strategically planned with other organizations on what we need to do about our county. That's shameful, and we need to be ashamed of ourselves. I'm ashamed to call myself a Marlboro County Councilman. And I have to spray to find information. Because we have someone who's not willing to be transparent with us and can help us guide this process and this law shift we call Marlboro County. We're not infants. We are sound men and a woman with a sound mind that can help, that has knowledge, that are intelligent, that can see places where one person might can't see. That can be able to fill a gap that another person may not be able to fill out why, because we love this county and we stepped up to be public service, not only in title but in action. I'm not sure about anybody else, and I'm speaking for myself. I'm ready to be in action with our county and our administrator and everybody else who would want to work toward the betterment of our county. If we sit here and go home and not be ashamed of what has happened and is continuing If we sit here and go home and not be ashamed of what has happened and is continuing to happen in our county, shame on those. God is not pleased with what has happened and God is not pleased with we continue the direction that we're on. Yeah, I'm laughing, we are getting a little animated, but I'm feeling the frustration of all the people around the county who bring me their frustration because they are actively engaged and not seeing any results. And they looking at me, what are y'all doing? And I can honestly tell them, nothing.
I just like Sheriff McNeil, I've known him a long time too, but I thank you for taking the position. You didn't have to do it and I appreciate that, that says a lot about you, you've been a long county and you always hang out, so I wouldn't speak nothing, nothing different. So I think you'll find the whole county council, we'd be glad to work with you and just glad to have you aboard, we're pretty happy with the tone that you're taking, they laid on us. That's all.
And I'll say, for closing and taking on this position as county chairman, I'm gonna do everything by my power to run several and organize meetings and I'm gonna react to these committees where we can settle our differences and continue our efforts on a smaller, more controlled basis and come here unified once again, you know, that it means nothing for the betterment of the community. And Sheriff, it's good with the effort you're making, the emphasis, salary, I appreciate your work. With that being said, if the county rests in me, I call this meeting, sir.